Good deal. All hearts and minds clear? All hearts and minds appear to be clear. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Maryland Commission. This will serve as the work session for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And as always, we turn it over to the pride of West Green, Georgia, our city manager, Mr. Charlie Davis, to lead us through it. Mr. Davis?
Good afternoon, Maryland Council.
Good afternoon.
The first item we have is item one, found on page four, a review of the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Mr. Dern, lead us through it.
Consent.
Consent. Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp. Consent. Commissioner McNeil.
Yes, sir, consent.
Mr. Bailey.
Consent.
Mr. Taylor.
Consent.
Good deal. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item two, found on page eleven, discuss the City of Douglas Elections Agreement. Winetta Bolger.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
I'm good. I'm here tonight to discuss seeking approval for the Maryland Commission to enter into agreement with the Coffee County Board of Elections and Registration to conduct two thousand twenty-three city election.
Thank you. Commissioner Dern, lead us through it.
Consent.
Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp.
Oppose.
Opposed. Commissioner McNeil?
I understand now there's a lot of negativity and a lot of anxiousness about the City of Douglas elections. And I would assume that we're starting over with that. And I want to be sure that, you know, that we're all in agreement that that would be.
I just want to say that years ago, the governor had already signed off. They have already been doing the elections.
Right. They're the only entity that can hold an election. That's state law.
Signed by the governor years ago.
So we just have to enter into a contract for them to do it.
Because we pay for it.
So there is no alternative?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Taylor.
Consent.
We'll carry that forward. It was not unanimous.
And I'd just like to add, that's not the way that I understood it. Because really, it's going to need to come before us if there's no alternative.
Correct. That's just the agreement of the contract, correct?
That's correct.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item three, found on page fifteen, discuss the bid award for the Aeration and Sand Filter Rehab Project at the Wastewater Treatment Plant. That was scheduled for Mike Hudson to cover that, but I'll be covering that for him. As you know, we're doing upgrades to the water and sewer system. This is part of the GFA and state government ARPA grant, along with some monies that we're putting into it. Bids were taken on this. The lowest bid came out eight million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So we're coming forward, the Maryland Council, to recommend that the Maryland Council approve the low bid from Lake Shore Engineer out of Atlanta, Georgia, for the total contract price of eight million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for performing work at the Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Mr. Bailey, lead us through it.
We've used this company in the past with a good deal of success. Their bid was also about two million dollars less than the only other bid that was submitted. So consent.
Consent. Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Commissioner McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent.
Mayor Pro Temp? Consent. Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Mr. Dern?
Consent.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Next item is item four, found on page twenty-one, discuss the rental quote from Vector Two Thousand One Hundred Comnia Sewer Jetter. As you know, our current sewage truck is down. It's in Atlanta being repaired. This is for the rental. We'll probably need it for two months. Hopefully, we may only need it for six weeks. But the rental price is fourteen thousand, four hundred nine dollars and twenty-five cents a month for the rental of the truck.
Mr. Bailey, lead us through it.
Consent. It's expensive, but we need it.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Was that the only place we could rent from, Mr. Taylor?
She said, was that the only place we could rent?
They contacted two or three of them, and this is the price, because they're all running about the same price. They're just expensive.
You okay with consent? Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Mr. Dern?
Consent.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
This is item five, found on page twenty-four, discuss the appointments to the Douglas Coffee County Land Bank Authority, George Henderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Coming for you tonight, we have two expiring terms on the land bank, that being Commissioner Cindy McNeil and Ms. Donizra Williams. We're coming for you. We have to go forward to publicize it two weeks and come back before you with an appointment recommendation.
Okay. We'll carry that forward for that two weeks. Next item?
All right, next item is item six, found on page twenty-five, discuss the resolution to adopt the Neighborhood Redevelopment Program Housing Rehabilitation Reconstruction Policies and Procedures for the CDBG two thousand twenty-one. George.
We do have the CDBG housing rehab grant open. We're backtracking. This is one of the documents that we forgot to adopt. And before we close out the grant, we have to have it adopted. This is the redevelopment and rehabilitation, construction policies and procedures. And we'll need your approval and mayor's talk to also execute the resolution that goes along with the adoption of it tonight.
Mr. Taylor, lead us through it.
Consent.
Commissioner Bailey?
Consent.
Commissioner McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent.
Mayor Pro Temp? Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Commissioner Dern?
Consent.
Good deal. Next item?
All right, next item is item seven, found on page one sixty-seven, discuss the appeal of the denial for the renewal of occupational tax certificate, AKA business license, for Archie Merritt Tire due to delinquent taxes. George.
Thank you. Yes, the business owners requested to appeal before you all tonight. Just to give you a little background, this is Archie Merritt's Tire Company. They're located down past Flying Cowboys where they're currently located, if you don't know where they are. Our ordinance states that if anyone owes delinquent taxes or debt to the city, we cannot issue an occupational tax certificate, which is a business license. They, at the time, we done the agenda, owe nine thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Taxes are delinquent. It says in the agenda since two thousand eight, but it's two thousand and seven. And Jessica and Chris are here tonight to make their appeal before you all. And before they come, I just want to say staff is not in favor of this, because we're afraid if you open it up, for one, we may have more coming. But it is your discretion to take the final vote on it. So. Jessica. Chris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. What's brought us here to this situation is unfortunately some real poor management that I've hired. And fortunately, at this moment, I hope and feel that I have the proper management in the store. Just several months ago, we had a payment plan set up. And the lady in my office, I had even asked her, have you been down to the city to take care of these payments? And she responded, yes, I'm going to go tomorrow. When she went down, I even called back that afternoon. I said, hey, did you go down and take care of the payments? And they said, oh, she said that there was no more payments to be made. They couldn't find them. And I even mentioned to Jessica, I said, well, what did they do? Amend it where it went away. And the city marshal contacted me recently. And I spoke with him, and he said, you know, you've got these taxes, your licenses are coming up. So I said, okay, we'll come renew. And the taxes, we come to find out, are still in place in the payment. And we duly want the City of Douglas to have their tax money. And also, my understanding of this, with these tangible taxes, the management that I had in place, you're supposed to fill out what you have at the business and the property, and turn that in with the value of each item. Well, that wasn't done. So it was assessed at, you know, an assessment of what they thought we might have. And I, after looking at it, was shocked that they had assessed it at such a high amount. I felt they thought it was, you know, Goodyear, Firestone, that little bitty Archie Merritt Tire. But at the point, there was no argument. It was done. I had to make the payment. So what we're here for today is to say, you know, plead with the City of Douglas, can we go forward with these payments now that I feel I have some management in place that can take care of it? And certainly, I do not live here in Coffee County, although this is my mother's hometown. I work outside of the state of Georgia, that I will keep a better eye on it to make sure that it's, the payments are made, or mediate this to something that Archie Merritt can afford to pay. And if I don't get a business license and close Archie Merritt, I'm not going to have any way to pay it. So I'm in a catch-22. And I'm throwing myself and the company at the mercy of the council this afternoon. You know, if we can get a license and continue forward, I'd like the City of Douglas to get their money, or mediate it to something that's feasible due to the fact that the assessments were made without the management putting down exactly what we do owe on taxes in such a small tire shop. And that's basically. And I did try to pay this year's. I went down to the courthouse to pay two thousand twenty-two's, so it doesn't get any worse. And the lady told me, sir, if you pay that, it's not going to pay two thousand twenty-two. It's only going to go on the back of it. And I was like, you know. So I'm giving my best effort forward.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
The assessment part of it is, so in other words, this year, for last year, it's two hundred and forty-nine dollars and change. But then if you look back at the others, they've assessed it so high, which obviously is our fault, because we didn't do the paperwork that was supposed to be done. But that's out of our hands. So it's gone from two forty-nine just for this one particular year. The other ones are nine thousand dollars. So that's approximately fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars a year versus what it really is at two fifty for this year.
Yes.
Again, that's our fault. It's our fault that we didn't get the paperwork in when it was supposed to be in. But in all reality, it's not, it really wouldn't be nine thousand.
It wouldn't be nine thousand dollars. It's just a clerical error on the management's part not to write down one tire machine of value of six hundred dollars and impact for a hundred and ten dollars. So it was assessed, and they are assessing it at eighteen to two thousand dollars a year, where, you know, like it has been assessed properly this past two thousand twenty-two at two hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. So needless to say, I'm in a mess between a rock and a hard place.
Well, I'll leave this off, a little history.
Yes, sir.
Approximately two years ago, the city recognized that they were issuing business license to individuals or businesses that were delinquent on their taxes.
Yes, sir.
The City of Douglas issued somewhere around twelve hundred business license. There was an eighteen-month reprieve given to everybody, to everybody. The prior year, which would be two thousand twenty-two, you can put that one year on the plan, and the city will issue your license. But as far as going back, I think that last time I talked with Ms. Henderson, of the twelve hundred, there were only nine on the list. Has that changed?
Since then, it's still nine.
It's nine. So out of the twelve hundred businesses here in the City of Douglas, only nine people. Everyone has, except for those nine, have paid the taxes. And that's why the city tried to give that reprieve. So everybody's been given eighteen months, and everyone has, except for those nine, have complied. It would be my position that the City of Douglas continue on the path, because if we open up this door, then somebody else wants that.
No, I, sir, I totally understand. But whatever the reprieve that you're speaking of, I didn't know anything or know any knowledge of this. And I understand that, I totally understand what you're saying. I don't disagree with you. But my position is, if the payment plan is in place, I will see to it that these payments are made. Or can we mediate this down to what it should have been without the assessments, where I can make a one-time payment that I can afford to continue to operate there? If neither one of these work, I have no choice but to close that store and pack it up and leave. And that's just the bottom line. If there's anything we can do, I'm here to make that happen.
Right. Well, the assessment, that's at the level of the county. I've stated my position. I think that we should hold the line. Mayor Pro Temp, do you want to weigh in?
I'd like to. So if we had nine businesses that had not paid, Ms. Henderson, what methodology did we use to contact those nine?
Phone calls, certified letters, phone call certified letters.
So you have no knowledge of a certified letter?
Ma'am, the only knowledge of this, since I was told when the lady that was in the office went down, I asked her to make sure she was making the payment, is recently when the city marshal contacted us four weeks ago. There again, I'm not working, Mr. Goodard, the city marshal, Mr. Goodard. Goddard, yes, Mr. Goddard. And we've been talking with him for the last three to four weeks to try to get here, to get this resolved, you know, to keep operating. So I don't have nine thousand dollars to pay it. And without, you know, a mediation of the fine, which you clearly stated, that's not going to happen. And without a payment plan, well, that's the end of the tire store.
So the nine thousand dollars that was assessed?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything was inaccurate? Did you all go to the county to have them to get that corrected?
We did. We did approach the county with that. And they said that there was nothing, the person that we spoke to said, there's nothing that you can do. It's already been assessed, and you're stuck with it. And that's when I said, well, we'll make a payment plan. And honestly, to my knowledge, I thought this payment plan was being taken care of through that tire store, with the management I had in place. And this has been a total slap in my face. Trust me, I didn't travel all this way if I wasn't concerned. I'm truly concerned and wanting to see, you know, that I can stay in operation and the City of Douglas get their taxes.
The mayor just said to me that another business had to pay about seven thousand. And see, I do know, I think, if it works the same way with businesses, as it worked with homeowners, when you receive these notices from the county as to what they're saying you have been assessed, you have its number of days, I think, to appeal it to them to get it corrected.
Well, yeah, well, this was my understanding after this accumulated. This was my understanding, that this is what I was shackled down to, to take care of the nine thousand. So do you, any way to break the nine thousand dollars into any type of payments where we can continue to operate here in the City of Douglas?
Does our policy state anything about that?
No, the most recent policy that we adopted is we allow the payment plan on the past current year, which is two thousand twenty-two. Any other taxes over prior to that time, we do not honor that because they're delinquent. So even if you go pay the plan for twenty-two, we still cannot issue the license. That was that last policy that we adopted.
Yeah, and that's the two fifty I tried to pay today to see if it wouldn't get any worse. And we've got a wonderful accountant out here in town, Hurst and Hurst, that's really taking good care of us and getting that shop back on the right path.
Excuse me? Do we have to move along? Mayor, you still have anything?
It kind of puts me in between a rock and a hard place, being that we passed the policy that says you have to pay anything prior to the previous year. I sympathize with you. And now.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking back, because see, we hadn't had a case come up when we made that decision that we made.
Yes, ma'am.
Now that we have a case, yours, I see it differently.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish that we could do some type of payment plan, or say you pay a third of it now, and we'll let you get back into business, and then you pay the third, another third.
Sure, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Looking back, I wish we had, you know, constructed a policy such as that. But we didn't. And that's maybe something our code enforcement department might want to consider in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
Being that we've already assessed someone else a large amount of seven thousand, if we say we're going to allow you to mediate, then that person is going to come back, and we're just going to keep going on and on and on. So my sympathy to you, I really wish that we could allow you to pay part of it.
Yes, ma'am.
And go ahead and stay in business and pay the other part. So that's my position.
Thank you. Mr. Gow? How long would it take you to pay the nine thousand dollars? What are you proposing?
I was going to ask if I could break it down into payments of two thousand dollars every thirty days or so.
Every sixty days or so? That's all the question I have.
The only question and concern I have is really with the payment of the taxes we get, that's not with us. That's with the county. The nine thousand, nine thousand, five hundred forty-seven and sixty-seven dollars, that's with the county. And they're going to have to break that down to your payments. So really, the appeal for the nine thousand is really with the county.
Okay.
Now, if it was to say, well, if the county would make a payment, you know, put you in those payments, and you was to come back with us saying that agree, but it still put you, like, if you still with the audience that we have now, from two thousand twenty-two, that's still one year, that was still thirteen years old. And see, that's still a sense of precedence if we give it to you. And I know a lady that had it, has a business, that's, you know, with the legal taxes. And that'll be unfair to her. And I know she's a hardworking woman, and as well as the ones on the list, too. So we don't want to set a precedence to anything, but I wish it was, you know, a way. But still, like, the nine thousand, that'll be have to come down from the county on to us. Because they're the ones that set that in place. We just set the fee for the business license, and setting to make sure that we, you're in line with that.
Okay.
So how long can I stay operating down there till I can figure out what the county says, or can come back to the commission? What am I to do?
We have to take care of this matter at hand, and then you can get with Georgia. But the rule that this commission adopted, the only thing that, even if you go down to the county, and the county says, hey, we want to take two thousand dollars every thirty days, that's still not applicable to the rule that was adopted. The only, even if the county sets up that plan, the only plan that the city recognizes, according to our policy, is the prior year. So that's it. I'm sorry, Commissioner Dern, were you done?
Oh, yeah, I was just saying, that's what the city places.
Okay.
I hate it. I hate it because, you know, I know people are trying to, you know, get their business stuff. Business is great, especially with the taxes and stuff. But I just hate in the future, I just pray in the future that you have someone that tend to your business, you know, properly, because that's a little bad.
So how much time do I have before I close the store? Is my license expired at this moment, or?
Yes.
It is. So I basically need to go ahead and close that up at this point, correct?
I'm not going to say that. I'm just saying, according to the policy, you're not going to be, depending on, I still got half the council to go.
Yes, sir.
Depending on what they say.
Yes, sir.
You're not going to be issued a business license. You're going to be operating a business in the City of Douglas without a license. Commissioner McNeil?
Well, and I'll be brief here, but I'm a business owner here in the city also. And I'm probably one of the few commissioners here who has, in fact, multiple businesses in the city. So anytime there's any discrepancy like this, or any regard to that, I would be probably the most likely one to get a phone call to say, what do you think, or how do you feel?
Yes.
Why was this done this way?
Yes, ma'am.
Why these gentlemen allowed this when the rest of us aren't?
Sure.
So that is what I would fear most, for me, and especially for the mayor, that I couldn't vote in favor of allowing it because of the precautions there. And like he was saying, of the number of people that was made to go ahead and pay, even the ones, the other eight, who are sitting out there, I'm sure I feel strongly, three of them I know personally, and there was a good reason for it. But I, you know, they haven't come before us. But again, it would put me in too awkward.
No, no, I understand.
As much as I feel for you as far as.
No, I understand. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bailey?
Unfortunately, I empathize with y'all as well, that, yeah, we're, the way the lines are drawn.
Yes, sir.
I don't see that we can, you know, deviate.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
I would just like to say, from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-two, me personally, if I hadn't paid my tax on my house, you know, I'm quite sure I wouldn't be living in it now, you know. But that is a little bit too long, and I'm afraid that I'm going to have to say that we're going to have to deny your license.
Okay.
So let me ask, to see whether we need to take this forward. So to deny this, Commissioner Pearson, do you want to put that on the consent, or do you want to carry it forward?
Unless we have any dissenting council members, it'll be on consent. I don't think anybody has dissented so far.
Right. Everybody's good?
Yeah, but I'd like to add before we move further, that, you know, because of the fact that those other businesses have talked to us about the same thing, problem with it.
Yes, ma'am.
And we did not go, you know, change it. It wouldn't be fair to change it now.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Again, I do sympathize with the problem that you have.
Thank you for basically understanding.
Yes, ma'am. The only other question, so I'll get with the. Yes, ma'am. Uh, uh, the only other question, so I'll get with the city marshal and he'll tell me how much time I have before I can, uh, get it closed down.
Yeah, do you recommend us going to the county and asking them for the payment?
But that, with the county.
They're not gonna give us a license.
Yeah, with the county giving you, that has, that has no impact on the city's policy. It's only the prior year.
I, I can talk to you.
Okay, so if, if, if the county's paid, if they were paid in full, I could get my license.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, next item.
Next item is item eight, found on page one seventy-four, discussed the purchase of a York chiller through the Johnson Control Group from GMA. If you remember sometime back, I was telling you, we was living along the way on GMA. Uh, the system is failing on the, on GMA. The, we've got half the compressor wired now, keeping it going. Um, so we're coming tonight to ask you to, for us to, uh, purchase the York chillers around, let me quote there, ninety-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. The kicker to this one is it's a forty-eight week lead time. So even when we put the order in tomorrow, it's gonna be next, next calendar year before this thing shows up. And so hopefully, um, we'll make it through the summer month. The chiller's only used for the cooling operations and so we'll be in heating operations. So hopefully, we'll be okay throughout, you know, through this rest of the summer. Uh, but it is a forty-eight month lead time, so even with approval tonight, it's next year before that chiller gets here. Uh, and just go ahead and throw out too, I'll be bringing more bad news. Um, the, the art center and the, uh, that air conditioning system, we're having evaluated now. Um, it's looking like it's gonna be around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair the other art center, recreation office, and the wear center. So that'll be coming, that'll be coming in the next few weeks to you also. But anyway, the gen item night is for the approval of the York, York chiller purchase through Johnson Control, um, with, with an approximate amount of ninety-six thousand. I'm sure it may change a little bit between here and then forty-eight weeks, but that's the current quote, uh, plus the appropriate software and installation of that York chiller.
Commissioner Durham, lead us through it.
Consent.
Consent, Mr. Gow.
Consent.
Mayor Protemp?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Thank you. Next item?
Hold on, I got a question. When he was saying about, you said about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the art center and the.
Wear center and the recreation office. It runs, it runs on the same system.
So when that'll come before us?
We're having evaluated now, uh, 'cause, you know, that, that technology was put in about thirty years ago. Uh, there may be a better way to do what we're currently doing, but the current replacement, uh, bill for what exactly happened over there now is around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And could we, um, start evaluating it real quick because we have people that are renting that place? And it's for hell over there, it's hot.
Even like with the wear center, we have units on order now. It's been about three months. Uh, the supply chain on HVAC equipment right now is just off the chain. And so it's taken anywhere from six months to twelve months to get some of this stuff in. So, uh, even if we made the decision today on some of this stuff, it ain't gonna happen due to the supply chain issue.
And I just hate, I hate that the people rented out and then when they rented out, they still let the official or someone, you know, get to saying, you need to get the calling this or calling that one. And we know it's hot and then they be wanting to say, I want my money back, I want my money back. But at the end of the day, like, we might get to stop renting that out because it is, it, it was hot, like, hot, hot, hot. If you're cooking in the kitchen, there ain't no air running in there. So, I mean, it were burning, hot. My muscles went to flailing in there. It was hot. I'm serious. It was hot in there.
Good deal?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, next item.
The next item, uh, item nine, found on page two twenty-four, uh, discuss the elected travel request. Commissioner Durham, you can take this over, but he had called to, uh, uh, ask a, a travel request for him and Mayor Protemp, um, Pearson to travel to the National League of Cities tra- uh, uh, training in Atlanta. Um, and as, as the policy dictates, anything that can satisfy the ordinary travel, uh, has to, mayor council has to approve that. Commissioner Durham, if you want to discuss the travel.
I was talking to Charlie and I asked him if he put it on the, um, agenda because I remember it was a time when we was a part of the National League of Cities, but, um, y'all took it off, uh, y'all became not members of it because y'all were saying about the travel out of state and stuff. Well, since it's in Atlanta, Georgia, and a, a lot of our neighboring cities are going to attend, and I feel like that was a good way for us to network with other commissioners and get knowledge and everything. So, and that's when I told, uh, Charlie, would he, you know, could he put it on the agenda? Put it on the agenda and, um, speaking with him today, he attached everything, the hotel cost, everything about the agenda and everything, and I feel like that's a great thing to enlighten us on the side of GMA.
And I'd like to add to that, um, I have had the opportunity through the twenty-four years to, uh, attend some National League of City trainers, and they are very beneficial. And I'm sure if, uh, and the rest of you had a chance to attend, you would, you know, understand and appreciate the services that they provide. They, they're really invaluable. So, um, it's a very good training and I, I would like for us to beg you to attend that.
Well, um, my thing is this right here, um, I don't know that much about it. Uh, I think that, uh, the cost, um, I just, this time, I just don't feel like it's necessary for the city to pay, I think it's, what, four or five thousand dollars? Uh, that's just, that's just my, my position on that. Uh, Commissioner Gow?
Well, Mr. Mayor, before you go, Commissioner Gow, first, it states the budget says if it's, if the money is in the budget. So, Mr. City Manager, does the, uh, budget, uh, have the money for it?
I mean, we have training dollars in there, um, but now specifically, it wasn't budgeted for the National League. We had the GMA training and stuff in there, so.
But are there?
The National League's, you know.
Are there training funds left available in it? Are, are there monies in the budget?
Not currently, but I mean, but far as y'all voted, I mean, there, I mean, there would be money if y'all voted to do it. I mean, there's, I mean, it's specifically not in the budget now, but for, you know, five thousand, I have a twenty million dollar budget. Yeah, I mean, we could find it.
So the budget would be able to handle, okay.
But if we all went, if we all decided to go and we're talking about that much money and add food and everything else to this mileage and gas and all that, how, that, that could impact the budget fairly?
Well, I mean, a- anytime you add on non-budget items, it, it adds up, but, uh. That's just.
We're no longer, we're no longer members of, excuse me, of National League of Cities.
Excuse me for a second.
Mr. Gow had the floor. Yes, Mr. Gow had the floor.
Is this like GMA? Do y'all get GMA credit like we do for these training classes that we go to?
We was a part of this. How many years that was, Charlie? How many years that's been?
It's, it's been seven, eight, nine years since we've been a member of it.
Yeah, 'cause Mr. Jacobs was the city manager then, we was a part.
Right.
So we're, we're no longer a part of it, Charlie?
No.
When he comes himself.
You're good, Mr. Gow?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McNeil, you already, you what, anything else?
Yeah, I think just again from a cost standpoint, this may not take a year to try and restate or to go back to it because of the, the price of everything right now. And we just heard about from city manager about definition units and things like that. Our budget is, is one, we all know the importance of leading and managing, so. Uh, when I first saw this, I thought, wow, this all looking to govern and doing this. But then as the more I thought about it and ran the numbers on it, I think it can probably not be a good idea, or would not be a good idea.
Commissioner.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. You're good?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bailey?
Well, if, 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 if the city dropped out or declined to, uh, participate, you know, eight, nine, ten years ago, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine on leaving this on the, on the sideline.
Mr. Taylor?
My question is, is this a requirement for the city of Douglas, you know, to, you know, Charlie?
Sure.
Is this a requirement, you know?
No, I mean, there's no National League of Cities requirement. The only thing that's really required in the state of Georgia is the GMA, elect, some of the elected officials training, the newly elected. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's training, it's, you know, whatever, it's just training. Y'all just gotta evaluate and see if it's, y'all wanna do it or not.
I'd just like to add to what, um.
We'll take it.
Commissioner McNeil, uh, stated, um, you know, she mentioned about the air conditioners and so forth and so on. Any budget that you have has its line items. So this training would not have an impact on our air conditioning repairs. It would, it would not have an, uh, impact. So, 'cause, so, its number of dollars are allocated for training and everybody, all the commissioners don't even attend training. So there, there, there have been monies carried over from one year to the next because so many of you don't attend trainings. So that, that has nothing to do with the air conditioning and, and your other line items for your budget.
So, we're gonna carry that forward for vote. Uh, also, Commissioner Taylor, uh, it was brought to my attention, he's trying to get Pearl Street closed from eleven A M. to five P M. uh, behind the church for a bookbag giveaway. Mr. Taylor, lead us through it.
Uh, yes, sir. On Saturday, which this coming Saturday, uh, we are asking the city councils to, um, close the, on Pearl between the church and, and South College. The purpose of it is to, um, um, we're gonna be giving away, uh, back to school items, uh, fun day for the, uh, city of Douglas, you know. I'm gonna have boxing, um, uh, things out there, waterfalls and all. And we are asking y'all to give us opportunity to close the road from, um, from eleven o'clock up till.
Five.
To five o'clock.
Okay, Mr. Bailey? You good? Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, I'll follow that.
Uh, Mayor Protemp?
Specifically where, where you want, wanting to have the road closed on which way?
Uh, there on Pearl Street, um, the house that we own, um, and also next to the church there. Uh, we would not be on the college. We have a parking lot out there. We just want to make sure when the kids cross from the, um, church over to, um, the field out there, we wanna make sure they are safe and no cars and things passing through there, you know, and all. Just gonna block a portion of the street off, not the whole street, just a portion of it. And, um, what we're gonna do is make it so that the road be closed and people that comes up to the road, they can turn around and go back the other way, you know.
And that's Pearl Street and College?
Yes, mhm.
Going back towards City Hall.
Going back towards City Hall.
Right.
So that's Ross.
Ross, mhm.
Well, you, you usually wanna do it from the property line.
From the property line.
Of High Tower.
Yeah, they just went from the car.
From college to Ross.
Yeah, not all the way to Ross.
Just Pearl Street, there by High Tower.
By High Tower.
Right, yeah, that little area, so the kids.
You might wanna, from, the reason why I say Ross is because if you don't do block off Ross, they gonna automatically drive up.
No, we, we'll have it, so, uh, 'cause we, the people that say.
No, 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 I'm saying to block off.
Okay.
You might need to do it from, I'm saying, like, if you blocking off college, that's bad.
Right.
But when you coming down Pearl off of Baker, you drive right there. Ross is the nearest street.
Right, right.
That's right there and that you might need to just.
My biggest concern was the residents that stayed.
Right, they still can get in and out, but you need to just put aside.
Okay, okay.
Would that interfere, 'cause there's gonna be a big, uh, influx of people at, uh, at, uh, Gaines Chapel Church. So would that interfere with that? Because Gaines Chapel is in between, sits in between what street?
No, that's on.
That's Coffee.
That's on Coffee.
Coffee, okay, okay.
You're good?
Yeah.
Mr. Gow?
Good with.
Okay.
Good, we'll put that on the consent. Mr. City Manager?
And I just asked y'all to call that item twelve on the work session agenda.
Okay.
We've, we've got eleven, um, um, eleven items on.
That goes on the consent. Anything else? Any general, any comments?
No comments, no updates.
No updates, all right.
Uh, general comments? Okay, I, I got something. Um, Mr. Neesmith, you have something for each electric official? Uh, I'd just like to, at this time, before we go into the regular meeting, inform for Mr. Neesmith to give him all theirs. To inform you all, Mr. Neesmith is about to give you all a flyer about the Coffee County Voting System Breaches uh, to be held this Saturday off to nineteen twenty twenty-three at three P M. At Gaines Chapel Elementary Church, one thousand eight South Coffee Avenue, Douglas. Like dinner will be served, so come out and find out why have the coffee breaches been national news? Why did it take so long for the public to learn about it? Who were the unauthorized people who gained interest? Why aren't county officials investigating the breaches and what local voters can do to demand accountability? So I'd just like to inform you all of that, invite everyone that's invited.
Okay.
And the public.
You're good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we're gonna close out the work session and we'll do it for real in about three minutes. I have to go put my jacket on. I'll be right, right, nobody go anywhere.
Ready, two, left, face, forward, march, left, right, right, right.
You may be seated. Outstanding. Next item on the agenda is the order of the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda. We have the Coffee Weightlifting Team Recognition. Is there a coach that can come to the back? Lead us through it, Coach.
Thank you.
Lead us through it.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you so much. My name is Mike Booth. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our lifters. I know you've got a busy evening and we've got a lot of lifters, so I'll get into it really quick. This summer, we took fourteen lifters to the USA Weightlifting National Youth Championships held in Colorado Springs, Colorado. It is the culminating event for weightlifting in the nation. And we had fourteen lifters that qualified for that. That's probably best if I just, can I call them up one at a time? Would that be fine for you guys? I'm gonna call.
Come back here.
Alright, so you guys, you want them on which side?
They just come up here.
And what I'll do is I'll call them out by age division. So our first lifter was Scott Smith. He's in thirteen and under division. Followed by Scott.
Scott.
We have Brody Lot. Brody is also a thirteen and under. Thirteen and under, Kagan Bush. Cole McDuffie. Tripp Lewis. Noah Booth. And our last thirteen and under, our only female thirteen and under, was Reese Robinson.
Oh, yeah. My daughter always say, often times, the best man for the job is a woman.
That's right. That's correct. Alright, I'm gonna go to our fourteen, fifteen division.
With this group here?
We've got more.
I know, but we, y'all come on down.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, let's get a picture with the thirteen. Come on. There you go, you're right here. Alright, where the parents at? Be right there behind the coat. Good deal, let's give another round. Okay, I set this group down, Coach?
You can.
Alright, if y'all take your seats, and then we'll call up the next group. That's what I was talking about.
We've got one fourteen, fifteen division lifter. That was Brayden Vester. And why don't I call our sixteen and seventeens up with him, so he's not getting a picture by himself? Would that be alright? In our sixteen, seventeen division, we had Tico Smith. Zane Preston. And we had one female sixteen, seventeen. Chloe Mara. And we had a lot, make sure I did get everybody right. I got them all.
Alright. Y'all made it in the second. Get them five. You over here, Sam.
If y'all want to put it out there, be. Go. Oh, slow. Hold on, let me swell up. Swell up. Y'all ready?
Also like to recognize my coaches, if I don't mind.
Yes, yes.
We had four coaches, Katie Lot. Ashley.
I see you.
Ashley Hewlett. Gavin Knight. And as you were saying, my boss, my wife Angela Booth. And just real quick, this team right here, our thirteen and under group, were national champions this year. Our sixteen and seventeen boys were national champions. And we won the overall boys' national championship as well, so a lot of. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this as well. It's been a while since we had the opportunity to come speak with you. I had one athlete, Range Robinson, that made the world team this year. That represented Coffee County at the World Weightlifting Championships for the youth division as well. And so, big congratulations to him. And that's it. I don't wanna be rude, but I did see one of our guys. We have, most of our athletes are playing football and softball right now. And I saw one of them, he was eating a Styrofoam cup earlier, so. If it's alright with you, I know some of them probably need to go eat after this. So thank you so much for this opportunity. We appreciate it.
Before you go, before you go, I say this every time we have a youth group up here. Our greatest ambassadors for our community is our youth. They travel all over this nation, all over this nation, to compete. And they always introduce them from Coffee County, from Douglas. You take our names in places that even the elected officials don't take that name. And we're indebted to you for carrying yourselves with such high esteem, getting out there, putting in the extra work. We're indebted to the parents, making sure that they get there, making sure everything's squared away. Last meeting, we had national champions. This meeting, we have national champions. So somebody gotta step up for our next meeting. We on the roll, baby. We on the roll. Thank you, appreciate it. And there's gonna be a mad exit to the left. It's gonna be a mad exit to the left. Alright, you gonna.
Go ahead and introduce you to the mayor of the vision right here.
We're gonna take a quick minute and get the weightlifters to go grab something.
Right, take care.
You senior or sophomore? I got a sophomore. Good deal?
Alright, the next item on the agenda is the recognition of state golf and tennis champions. Commissioner, if you'll join me up here. Ms. Georgia Henderson is gonna lead us through it.
Alright, we're gonna start out with the golf state champions. They played at the Alma, in Alma, at the Blueberry Plantation. So the state champion in eleven and under boys is Jack Spivey.
Is Jack here? Is Jack here? Okay, next.
Alright, state runner-up in eleven and under boys, Cash Hodge. State runner-up thirteen and under boys, Bentley Taylor. State runner-up fifteen and under boys, Ethan Taylor. Alright, we recognized them, they're not present. So moving to the state champion in the tennis, and they played in Bainbridge. They were coached by Tiffany Rickenson. So in the girls, twelve and under doubles, Sidney Regal and Anna Grace Timothy. And the girls eight and under singles, Chloe Davis. State runner-up in boys, eight and under, Kenneth Betts. Alright, state runner-up in girls eight and under singles, Natalie Regal. And state runner-up mixed doubles, Remy Kate Rickenson and Garrett Regal.
If you want to come to the center to get a better shot, come on over.
Okay. Did you get yours? I'm gonna say this, Mayor, on behalf of Parks and Recreation Department, Stevie Young would have been here, he had to leave unexpectedly. And the junior golfers, the golfers who, many of the names you recall, it's a, guys, I recognize these names. We're in a tournament this weekend, a big tournament, the In-Lot Junior Ball. Or In-Lot Ball, as it's now called, Junior Ball. They played in that, in this heat over the weekend. So if you can imagine, I'm sure, I'm sure, they were, when that is school and they're pretty worn out. So thank you again, and thank them, and their parents also, for the golf success.
Outstanding. Next item on the agenda is the swearing in of the 2023-2024 Marriage Youth Council members.
We're doing a second, sorry. Sorry.
Yes, sir.
My God. Okay, yes. With my. Alright, now we're gonna swear in individuals, so the parents can get their single photo. City of Douglas, Georgia, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. Alright, if you would stand right over there, we're gonna bring up the tension, then we'll get one of you to move over. Okay? Thank you. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. Oh. Come on. Henderson. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Destiny Henderson. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. Come on. You alright? I swear this guy like grew like thirty years.
Over the summer.
I mean, over summer, he was like right here.
They going fast.
I think you sit down. Alright, here we go. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. Oh, really.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting you talking for it, so. What you saying, I got something for you. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. My bar, here. That's my bar. I'm saying you. Yeah, we ain't started. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Junior Mayor Proton with the Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God. City of Douglas, Oath of Office, City of Douglas Marriage Youth Council, aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Junior Mayor with the Marriage Youth Council of the City of Douglas, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States of America. So help me God.
I do.
We're gonna get a picture with everybody?
Y'all have to go.
Would someone like to see it in some of these chairs?
Yes.
I mean, three chairs.
Well, anybody right here at the chair?
Is that in the line too much, Georgia?
Is that blocking?
Yeah, maybe not.
Okay.
What you think?
I just maybe give them if they double roll.
Double roll? Okay, double roll.
We continue what we were doing.
Alright, here we go.
So over here, we can double up.
Where?
Maybe raise shoulder out of all the others.
What about that? Are we good? Can we see everybody?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it.
Alright. We're good? So we're gonna have an exit? No, we're not gonna have an exit. I thought we were gonna have an exit. Alright? We're good? Everybody's back? Good deal. Here we go. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. As always, the city manager will lead us through that for transparency. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Council, we have seven items coming over from the consent agenda. As stated, I'll read them all. First one is the approval of the July twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes. Next is the approval for the Beadford Ward for the Aeration and Filter Rehab Project at the Waste Water Treatment Plant. Next is item four, approval of the rental quote for the Baxter Twenty-One Hundred Accommodation Sewer Jetter. The next is the approval of resolution to adopt the Neighborhood Redevelopment Program Housing Rehabilitation, Reconstruction Policies and Procedures for the CDBG twenty-twenty-one. Next is the approval of the denial for the renewal of occupational tax business license for Archimeric Tire. The next item is the approval of the purchase of the York Chiller through the Johnson Control for GMA. And the last item was the addition item of item twelve, approval for Pearl Street closure on August nineteenth from Ross to College, from eleven AM to five PM.
At this time, I entertain a motion for the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is work session items brought forward for discussion. Mr. City Manager?
We have three items coming over from the work session. First item is item two, that was found on page eleven, discuss the City of Douglas Elections Agreement. We're never bored.
Back in. And I'm here to seek approval from you all for the, for you all to enter into the agreement with the Coffee County Board of Elections and Registration, so they may conduct everything with the two thousand twenty-three city elections.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion and second, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Next item, item five, discuss the appointments to the Douglas Coffee County Land Bank Authority, Jordan Henderson.
Coming before y'all to request permission to publicize for two weeks, two vacant, two expiring positions on the Douglas Coffee County Land Bank Authority, at which time, we will come back before you in two weeks for an appointment.
Alright, good deal. Thank you. Next item?
Last item coming over is item nine. Discuss, discuss the elected travel requests.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
None.
None. Did you, it was no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's three, three, that's to me, I vote no.
Discussion. I was just, I was thinking about this, and with this item, we say about unnecessary spending and monies. We have to be very wise about what we say about it, you know, for to further that training and education of a commissioner and stuff. We have to say, you know, we have to think beyond the box. And also, we have to be, I mean, we have to watch what we say about the city's money and spending, because sometimes we spend unnecessary, I mean, sometimes we spend unnecessary, unnecessary items as well. So if it's further to better train it, that's, you know, I'm for that. So let's keep that in thought, as anything come across, you know.
Okay.
I'd like to add to what Commissioner Durham just said.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, you know, we have, to my knowledge, voted to allow whatever costs and expenses that the youth council might undertake, or whatever. And they go off to attend our various trainings, and they obtain knowledge as well. And it's just really a sad commentary. It's a sad commentary, in my opinion, when you have elected officials who are supposed to be your leaders, who want to vote against trying to obtain more training to help to make yourselves, and each of us, better leaders in our community. So I'm sad that, you know, you all talking about five thousand dollars, like it's a whole lot of money. And like I said, it's a very invaluable training. And I've had the chance through the twenty-four years of being here to attend the National League of Cities Training, and it's just really, 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 you learn so much. But if you choose to keep yourself from growing and learning, then that's on you all. But it's really a disservice, in my opinion, to citizens.
Okay. So, any staff comments?
No, sir.
No staff comments? Next item on the agenda is adjournment. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned.